Jason, I don't know if you remember as a kid the saying goes April showers.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, you're stuck with them all month.
Yeah, but we had all that rain in March.
Well, this year we had it in March too, so. Well, the new saying is February, March, and April showers.
January was the worst we've ever had.
Was it?
Yes, January was the worst one we had on the.
Hold the table these minutes.
Morning.
The first of your baseball game for you, have you guys started the end of the day?
Yeah, they started, yeah.
We didn't start them, we don't start them by night.
They felt, rain's been a problem, get games in.
Oh, my company looks great. That's, that's good.
Do you live there for now?
We actually had a skirmish last night.
That wrangle's perfect.
What? We got more.
What did they come today?
Yeah.
You want rain?
He's looking over to us here.
We, we lost, it was down Mark unfortunately Preston was the pitcher that let the two runs in in the overtime eighth inning. That cost us the game. It was way down.
Was it down there?
No, it was here, so we were one-one all the way through.
What's your acronym? Just be.
Good.
Look, I. You know, if I put my phone into the.
See, this is my phone, so it's, it just gets you to the top.
No way. Um.
Yeah.
When I, when I plug my phone in, it'll give me texts. But when I just use the Wi-Fi, it doesn't.
It doesn't, yeah. Physical screwing up the. Sitting out in the derm on the thing.
Usually the cheap seats are in the back.
So that's why.
They must be that.
I sent you the text, I already texted mine.
It's like a tilting shit.
Don't worry about it, he's covered.
It's like what?
He goes, it's not up here. It's up, shit.
We should make Kalen do wax, just so she has to sit through the whole meeting. So she has to stay here the whole time and enjoy.
I, I, I do enjoy.
He doesn't read, he's only.
Everybody's coming. Yes.
I just feel like you missed out on a thrilling climax.
Oh, no, I go, I go back upstairs and watch.
Story unfolds.
Oh, I go upstairs and watch.
You good man?
Provide commentary.
Why do I think she's lying?
Just, just remember that.
Listen, I, I could be a sportscaster. I definitely sports cast these meetings.
Nothing but compliments, I'm sure. All she says is nice play, nice play.
Absolutely.
Morning, Maya. Sorry for the confusion this morning.
No worries, that's the least of my worries.
Well, I have one bad eye, remembering the phone properly.
I've read it a couple times. What am I missing?
There's worse things for sure.
I saw Nikki.
Hey, good morning. Everyone, we ask you to please rise for the opening prayer and pledge allegiance before we can enter Commissioner's public meeting. Dear gracious and loving God, we gather this morning in humility and thank you for your many blessings. We ask you for your guidance and strength. And on Saturday, we'll recognize and celebrate the birth of Lycumay County. In seventeen ninety-five, was created from part of North Ullamlyn County. In name for the Lycumay County Creek. And has grown with the years with its rich history that we're blessed to call home. We're thankful for our valley nestled in the mountains and its beauty. Lord will celebrate and honor the Air Force Reserves on their birthday on Sunday. Its mission is to provide combat-ready forces to fly, fight, and win. They play a crucial role in the Department of Defense, and these men and women answer the call of duty. We thank you for the over seventy thousand reserves that serve our nation. Father, on Monday, will remember a time over three-quarters of a century ago. When a black man who was also a veteran had the courage of David the Goliath. And walked onto a baseball field. Like David slaved giant Goliath. Jackie Robinson slaved a colored barrier. That was instrumental in the early days of the civil rights movement. He was threatened, spat upon, called names, and isolated. But he kept his temper and tongue while silent when needed. He just demonstrated a pillar of strength as a result. And we thank you for his life and guided him through his days to help future generations. He was a cornerstone of change, and we celebrate his legacy. And we ask you to leave us this morning in our decisions. These things we ask in your name, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a beating and justice for all. Morning. This time we convene in Commissioner's public meeting and ask for approval of amendments to the previous meeting.
Can somebody just say something?
No.
Yeah, okay, I will make a motion.
A second. All fair side?
Aye.
We have an additional revision to the agenda not previously posted, Director?
Yeah, Commissioner, seeking your approval to add action item three point three and move to. Correction. Seeking your approval to remove Salary Board action item three point three and move it to personal action items. District Attorney requesting approval for special county detectives for Lycumay County Drug Task Force, DUI Roving Patrol, and DUI Center Patrol.
Okay, can I have a motion on that first?
Sure, I will make a motion.
I'll say it.
All fair side?
Aye.
And then a second one?
Uh, seeking your approval to add a second bullet. Point to action item seven point four. Reappointment of Daniel Clark effective one-one-twenty-three to twelve-thirty-one-twenty-seven.
Okay, can I have a motion to add the action item seven point four?
I will make the motion.
I'll say it.
All fair side?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. At this time, um, do we have any public comment on agenda items only?
Can I make a comment on your prayer? You said, our county's named after Lycumay Creek.
Yes.
Do we know what Lycumay Creek was named after? Is there, is it Native American, do we? Is that what it was? Larry, do we know that? Okay. That's just one. Since you did a little history, I have just wondered if you knew more.
I'll make a couple comments during Commissioner's comments about that.
Okay.
And hopefully more people will explore the history. Okay, um. Do we have any public comments on agenda items only besides that?
No, no, no.
Okay, and here you go, then reports, Kalen.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Presented for your ratification, our invoice is due through April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, to be paid on April tenth, twenty twenty-four. In the amount of two million, four hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and sixty-five cents. The breakdown is as follows, with seventeen point four-six percent being funded by the general fund. At four hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Fifty-three point zero-eight percent is being funded by pass-through monies and other grants. At one million, two hundred eighty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Twenty-six point three-nine percent is being funded by RMS at six hundred thirty-nine thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. And three point zero-seven percent is being funded by escrow at seventy-four thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the council table?
I will make the motion.
I'll say it.
Any questions or comments?
Nope, there aren't any ones to.
Are you getting that all fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, this is Jamie, we just got.
Good morning, Jamie, you're up.
Awesome, so, the first thing I think we have on the agenda is the twenty twenty-four app grant schedule. So we just wanted to make an announcement that those mailings are going out and the public notice will be published tomorrow. And the first public hearing and project development workshop will be made seventh at six P M. there at the county building at the Commissioner's turn.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner. You're welcome.
We have Jamie, can we switch to?
Would you like me to do the public hearing right now or wait until I come up?
Yes, yes, we're. Switch to that right now so we don't hold you up, we'll recess.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome, we'll recess Commissioner's meeting for the Community Development Block Grant Public Hearing at this time and move on to six point oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, for federal fiscal year funding twenty twenty-one, the public inquiry has funding left over in the Habitat for Humanity Acquisition Phase Two project. For one thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars that they would like to put into purchasing some equipment for North Central County services. As their equipment is broken and they need the equipment to be able to continue to function and increase services. Primarily, you know, they employ the disabled blind. So, we just need the, to take time to get public comment on that modification, if anybody has any comments or questions?
Do we have any public comment at this time on?
Give them the money.
We have a gentleman in the audience that gave them the money.
Awesome, perfect. All right, so then when you reconvene your regular meeting, we can take action to approve submitting that budget modification to D C E D.
Okay. At this time, we'll adjourn the public hearing and we'll move back and reconvene the Commissioner's public meeting at this time.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome, sure.
Okay, Lisa, are we?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so at this time, we'll recess Commissioner's public meeting again for the Salary Board. We'll convene Salary Board at this time. Do we have anybody from the Controller's Office on the phone? Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh. Controller requests, the Controller requests to vote to table the Salary Board minutes of the previous meeting of April fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, I have motion to table.
He made the motion, or is he looking?
He's looking for them.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So that the meeting minutes from that date, April fourth, are tabled at this time. Okay. We'll adjourn the Salary Board this time or reconvene the Commissioner's public meeting. And move on to personal actions. Jump it all over, please. Okay.
Much like the Native American term for sandy shores or sandy creek for Lycumay County. Is that what it is? That's what it is. Really? Sandy creek, you just Google that. Whatever.
Since he's, since he's a native here, he's.
Yeah, yeah.
It's coming from a North Dakota native.
This, this is North Dakota one-on-one, we learn all the other states first. Request approval, approve the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment, subject to the successful completion. A background check and all other employment conditions is outlined in attachment A. For financial management, Brian Ciotti, financial analyst, full-time replacement. Forty-seven thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars, thirty-four cents per year, that's a seventy-five hour pay period. Within anticipated start date of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Financial management, Heather Lehman, Chief Budget Officer, full-time replacement, that's a salary of seventy-four thousand, two hundred seventy-four dollars and forty-one cents per year. Seventy-five hours per pay period, anticipated transfer date of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. In the pre-release center, Sarah Ferrastro, Resident Supervisor One, full-time replacement. Eighteen sixty-four per hour, eighty hours per pay period with an anticipated start date, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. In the adult probation office, Kennedy Barr, adult probation officer two, that's a full-time replacement of thirty-seven per hour. Eighty hours per pay period with an anticipated effective date of April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. And then as moved, the District Attorney's Office requesting approval for special county detectives for the Lycumay County Drug Task Force, DUI Roving Patrol. And the DUI Center Patrol.
Okay. Can I have a motion for personal actions?
I will make the motion.
I'll say it.
Is there any questions or comments on any of them? Um, are the, under the District Attorney, are these new positions or they were existing positions?
They're, they're existing positions on the T D A. And so it's approving, uh, the personnel to fill the duties of those positions. They're just not named based on the.
So we don't have anybody slated for these positions yet, they're just?
They're, they're part-time positions and they, they fill time slots.
Okay.
Yep, yes.
Any, all fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we move on to action items. Seven point oh. Seven point one now.
I think we took care of it. Tanya.
Yes. So we're at seven point one, she has to vote approve. So.
Yeah, you have to vote.
Yeah.
Jamie, Jamie, you still on the phone?
I got.
Okay.
Commissioner, seeking your approval and the submission of the C D B G F Y. Twenty-one budget modification certification in the amount of forty-one thousand, nine hundred fifty-six dollars. These are twenty twenty-one C D B G funds.
And that's what she was just addressing on the phone? Okay, I have a motion.
I will make the motion.
I'll say it.
All fair side?
Aye.
Seven, two, three, Maya.
What do you, Maya?
Good morning, Commissioners, what do you have? Glad to see you're not sick.
Me too.
It wasn't news to him.
The first time I have for you. It's a. Vote to approve Blake Marks counsel to Lepley, Anglinia, and Welk attorneys at law in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars. This is for the District Attorney's Office for Special Legal Services, specifically to the juvenile cases that he has by formal court.
Okay. I have a motion.
I will make the motion.
I'll say it.
All fair side?
Aye.
The next item I have for you is vote to approve Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, known as P C C D. For the sub-grant award notification in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand dollars, five hundred, one hundred eleven thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars. This is actually a new grant, this is that grant that I found earlier last year, that some COVID monies that we could use for our prisons. So, um, it's taken a long time, but we finally there, we finally got awarded, so we'll be starting to expend that and working, I'll be working with the prison to spend, you know, those funds. But, um, it's an array of things between supplies, um, to installation of new fans for circulation out there. So it's a wide variety of things that we'll be purchasing out there.
Thank you, and this is a great example of, you know, our Chairman Office doing what they do best, is going to obtain grants. And, um, you know, like she says, this takes care of supplies that otherwise taxpayers would be paying for. And we get these grants from your efforts and your staff's efforts and, and other department heads that look for grants. Uh, we know we have a big county budget and a lot of the money comes through through grants. And if, if we didn't obtain those grants, they would go somewhere else.
That is correct, yeah.
Somewhere else in the state or somewhere nationally, and someone else be utilizing those, those federal and state dollars. And so we're thankful we have staff here and you in your office, so we want to thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
I have a motion.
I will make the motion.
I'll say it.
All fair side?
Aye.
All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Uh, seven point four, Commissioner seeking, uh, your approval to appoint and reappoint following individuals to the Lycumay County Authority. Point Steve Johnson effective one-one-twenty-four to twelve-thirty-one-twenty-eight. And then the reappointment of Daniel Clark effective one-one-twenty-three to twelve-thirty-one-twenty-eight.
Okay, I have a motion.
I will make the motion.
I'll say it.
And we want to thank both these gentlemen for taking their time and volunteering for these boards. They're so crucial in our county, so thank you. Again, for these gentlemen volunteering and all the volunteers that serve on the various boards that assist Lycumay County. All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven, five, through seven, seven, Jason.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning, James.
Morning, Director. Commissioners, first item for your approval, seven point five, this is the resolution twenty twenty-four zero four for the commercial line of credit with Citizens Northern Bank in the amount of forty million dollars. As we presented to you with C N N Bank back in January, what you're finally approving today is the actual resolution, where we've got all the i's dotted, the t's crossed, and all the paper works ready to get submitted. So, and for you is the actual resolution for forty million dollars.
Okay. Have a motion?
I will make the motion.
I'll say it.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner, seven point six, this is vote to approve purchase of a new twenty twenty-four D six. Dozer with Cleveland Brothers in the amount of five hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. This is a budget item, this will be replacing a two thousand sixteen D six T that we use in our waste with the eight. This, with the Co-Stars and the Buybacks and everything, so. Seeking your approval.
Jason, this says two thousand seventeen on the.
Yes, it's, I just, today, I, I didn't think I was ready, I think it's, I looked at those two thousand sixteen, sir. But anyways, it's got almost, now it has almost nine thousand hours on it, by the time we get the new one in, we'll, we'll hit that sweet spot where we got to put an undercarriage in again and invest money or get a new one, so that's why we, we try to rotate this out.
This is a half a million dollars and, and is nine thousand hours that long on a machine like that?
In the waste of it, sir. We've already put one undercarriage on it and we'll do. We had, if you recall, we had tried to rebuild the D eights that we put in the waste and it turned out we were upside down on them.
What did we get to trade in for that one?
Uh, we got one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Could we have got more if we sold it outright?
I don't believe so, the, in the, the attempt to move it outright, we typically move better through the equipment dealers.
Your township used to do this, but you.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, politely disagree with, with that, but I think that, and Maya and I have talked about it, and, and we won't put this on, on. The RMS test to do, we put that on the financial management's test to do, but I think, um, I'd like to try to do on some minisip bid and see if we can get higher numbers. Um, we, we always did a little stock, we got way more than the trade-in value, obviously the trade-in value, they're, they're buying to, to.
Terms.
We sell it, where if you do minisip bids, you could possibly get another county or another landfill, um, that needs it, that would pay us more, so. I mean, I have no problem. Trading this one in, but I think as we move forward, that's something we need to have Maya's team look at.
Okay, I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
I'm going to change this particular deal.
Okay. All right, any, you have any questions?
Who?
I'm good. I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner, seven, seven, is approved purchase of the twenty twenty-five Kenworth T four E four eighty curb side recycling truck from Kenworth, the amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars. This is through Kenworth, this will be the truck chassis, and then they'll be pulling in the package, the collection system that they'll mount on the back of it, that I showed you about. So this is, as curbside, we're recycled, we're mandated to recycle in three of the communities, Williamsport, South Williamsport, and Willows Park. So, we provide curbside recycling on Wednesdays. This truck will apply to the ninety-ten split grant, the nine oh twos, we call it the equipment grant. So, if you look back at your check run that you had this morning, you saw a significant amount of money that we paid out to the state, to Brady Township and so forth. So the funds that, we, we have to pay so much money per ton of waste to the state. Actually, total seven and a quarter comes off of our fees and goes out to Brady Township at a dollar thirty, uh, and the state gets the rest, broken up, then two dollars of it goes to the recycling grant. And we are allowed to apply for the nine oh two that, when it comes available, and it's a ninety-ten grant. So, ultimately, when this is said and done, we'll only have twenty-eight thousand dollars, about twenty-eight thousand five hundred basically in it, after we get the grants approval. So, we will, the next round, we will be putting that for the approval, but it is replacing a two thousand and seven, uh, as we refer to as R twenty-four, curbside recycling truck that is beyond repair.
Have you applied for this grant in the past?
Oh, we apply for it every time, sir, we do, we, we get this grant, uh, all the time, every, all municipalities that put into the nine oh two usually get it. You, you will always get the same amount, like this year, I think it's two hundred thousand, some years it's three hundred fifty thousand that's available per unit. So they, they target all recycling efforts or municipalities that need leaf waste trucks, stuff like that, so it's always available.
Have we ever been denied the amount or has it been reduced to maybe fifteen percent?
Well, the year that the state was going to try to take ninety million dollars out of the account, they upped it to three hundred fifty thousand per person, per application. So, it depends on what pressure is, it seems, um, how much is available, typically it's two hundred to three hundred thousand, three hundred fifty thousand. So, even if we, like, we can apply for several items, so the current one that you'll see for two hundred thousand is going to have parts for single stream and we, we can, any expense we put through recycling is eligible for the ninety-ten split. So, we always have a running list of items we can put through, so, yeah, we've, we've always received it.
Okay.
If, if, say you only put fifty thousand towards the purchase of this truck out of the, the current grant application. Then the, the next grant application, you can put more towards the balance of the purchase.
Yeah, you can, you can split it up however you want, so that's a good point from, Director, we very appreciate that, yeah. It, it'll always be eligible, and then once it's expensed, then we put a sticker on it that says this has been funded through nine oh two grant. And then ten, fifteen years down the road, if we ever go to sell it, trade it in, do whatever, you then have to submit a letter to back to D E P that, here's the truck or the piece of equipment, here's the value, current value, then. They typically ask you to put the money that you get from that machine back into your program, so there's a tracking system of everything we have grant funded. I, I would add to this too, just for, um, everybody and the, the other Commissioners and the public, so we had, uh, at our monthly meeting for, um, the recycle, for the Resource Management Services. Uh, we had the conversation of the, you know, how much is this truck utilized, or how much of these trucks utilized, and, uh, because I know when the program first came out, as, as Mr. York told me, we had a lot more routes, we've reduced those routes. Um, to where we're mandated to have the routes, um, but the values really were their elderly residents, because they can still put that container out and someone comes and gets it. As opposed to, you know, the rest of us that are running to all the different recycle areas, which we have available to everybody, but this is such an asset to our, our elderly people and they, they really do utilize it.
Thank you. Our seniors, our seniors.
Our healthy living of adults.
Our seniors like me.
Could you feel the solicitate glaring at him when he said that?
When I said.
So, and, and just for emphasis, the ninety-ten grants, we put in ten, they put in ninety, it's not.
We typically pay upfront, sir, we'll pay the amount and then we get the reimbursement.
So it's not like ten percent off, it's like ninety percent off?
Yeah, ninety percent off.
So, it is a.
But it's always typically behind, once you've bought the product, then we have the receipts, we submit all that for.
Right.
That's the math teacher, isn't it?
Yeah.
As, it was, when I first heard ninety-ten, I just assumed, you know, you don't see coupons that are ninety percent off, you see them ten percent off, so the ninety-ten grant, when we realized that we were putting in ten and they were putting in ninety, it's a, it's a good deal.
If you see what we submit quarterly to the state, it's off the kind of.
Yeah, I can imagine, I can imagine.
Okay, thank you, a motion?
I will make the motion.
I'll say it.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jason.
All right, seven point, Kenny. Wake up.
Morning, Commissioners. Before you today is a, um, a credit, which we don't get to do too often, but, um, is a change order with Salsnick Electric, um, in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred dollars, so refund on it later.
Okay, we'll be glad to take a motion for that. Okay, we'll be glad to take a motion for that.
I will make the motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye. I do, Ken, I'm working on it.
Does anyone ever vote against it?
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone ever vote against a credit for two thousand?
Does this have to do with the, is there a street plaza?
Yes, it does.
Does it have to do with the third floor?
Yeah, where we changed the lighting now.
Yes, and, uh, and you brought that to our attention.
Yes, we did.
And, uh, and we said, listen, um, we don't want anything elaborate, we don't want anything different than the employees, and we sure is, and, uh, same, same format, and that's what they did and saved us money.
Didn't you also say it's more energy efficient too? So it's not just a, it's a upfront savings, but it's a perpetual savings, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, on electric bill, because those lights would have used, uh, used equivalent to three floors?
Uh, yeah, we're saving, uh, roughly, rough numbers, but roughly four hundred and sixteen fixtures.
Good.
Um, and I think we're using a hundred and some on the entire floor, so we cut that many, that much in energy out.
That's great. I went over there yesterday to look at it and it's nice to see, are they the same, it's uniformed, or we don't need things elaborate or different than employees.
I, I think they look nice, I like the.
Yeah, they do.
Glow from the lights instead of the, the reflection, it's more, it's more of a softer, to me, it's more of a softer even light.
Yeah, great.
Now, this was a really good catch on your part, we thank you for that.
Thank you so much, Ken.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
So, motion and second on that, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, comment?
Uh, as noted earlier in our prayer, um, Saturday is Lake County County's birthday, it was created in seventeen ninety five, we, we urge the public to research the history of our county, it's, it's tremendous, as I look through some of it, uh, how each borough and, and the townships were, were developed and created and named and, and it's good to hear what our forefathers did in this county and, and some of the struggles that went on, um, you know, for instance, the county seat with Williamsport, you know, initially they wanted it up in Jaysburg and Newberry, and there was a, a kind of a conflict going back and forth between the two and where the county seat was gonna be at, and, uh, so it's interesting reading it, so we urge the public to read into our, our history and we're blessed to live here. Do you have anything for that?
Yeah, I just, as you mentioned, um, Jackie Robinson Day, which is, it's always on tax day too, which doesn't seem to be fair, because it's like, uh, it's a terrible day and it's a celebratory day, but, um, when you watch, uh, the movie, if you've watched Forty Two, if you haven't watched Forty Two, you should, uh, we, if, one of the things, it reminds us, we talk about, um, the courage of Jackie Robinson, um, but it also kind of reminds us that, that the courage of the people in power to, um, to help make change for, for the groups that are being oppressed, um, the Branch Riccos of the world, the Peewee Reese's of the world, who are instrumental in, in making this change come about, and it is, um, and we, we need to keep this in mind when we're dealing with, um, you know, we live in a world that still seems to be mostly run by old white men, and when we're dealing with women's rights and LGBTQ rights and, and social justice all across the map, to, to keep in mind that the, that the people who can really orchestrate change, um, and when you watch it again, the, the vision and the courage of, of the people, not just Jackie Robinson, but his teammates and the people with the doctors that really, um, that made this happen and helped it happen, and to remind ourselves what role we have in society, um, to help those who are being oppressed even today.
Mark, tell them about the colored league that existed in baseball all the time, between the separation of whites and colors and what Jackie Robinson had to go through, let people search their satchel page.
Yeah, I mean, the, the history of the Negro leagues, there's a, there's a Negro League Hall of Fame actually in Kansas City, um, and it just, you know, it was, it exemplified the times and, um, and it was, you know, it was, it was a hard time and it was when you, the, the, not just, the, the wisdom of Branch Rickey to, to, as he said, to pick the right person, because Jackie Robinson was a very good player, but he wasn't the best player in the Negro leagues, but he was UCLA educated, he had served in the military, um, that he, he thought, he knew was going to be tough on a lot of people, especially Jackie, and, um, he found the, the right guy that he thought could make it work, and, uh, it is, it's certainly, uh, even if you don't like baseball, which I don't, how could anyone not like baseball, um, it, the historical, uh, telling of it is, is really, it's a, it's a, it's a very important piece of American history, and, uh, it's just forty two, it's just a number, forty two.
Branch Rickey was the, the owner of the Dodgers and he had to find the right, the right man to fit that role and the man that had the temperament, because he knew what he was gonna go through.
At that time, it was Brooklyn Dodgers, not the LA Dodgers.
True, Brooklyn, yep, and, uh, and he sat him down, he went through a very tough interview at the time and, and Jackie's thinking, does this guy want me or doesn't he, he's more or less attacking me, and he basically said, said to them, this is what you're gonna experience, and, you know, you're gonna have to, to line your tongue and, but after, he gave him basically, after two years, when you prove to them that you're capable of playing on their level, then you can take those people out behind the woodshed and take care of them, and, uh, and so, he did, he was, uh, and he broke that barrier, which is tremendous for today, and we thank him and his legacy for it, because he went through a lot, and his family, his family went through a terrible time.
And I, I think it also showed how, um, because it was, like, everyone was not welcoming, and unfortunately for us, the guy in the movie was from Philadelphia, that was, uh, the manager from Philadelphia that was worse to him, but, um, uh, once they had the courage to break it, he won Rookie of the Year, and, uh, then that was voted on, obviously by, uh, a pool of white reporters and, so it, it did not, it did not take long for, for people to be embraced once they had, um, the courage to, to just say it was okay to take a play, so, um, yeah, it was just, it's an important time and I'm, I'm glad you brought that up today.
The owner of the Phillies at that time, I believe was, and Coach was Colin Mack.
No, he wasn't the coach, because it was.
He was the owner.
Yeah, I'm in the, um, I can't think of the guy's name, I can see him.
I can see him too, he didn't want to get his picture taken.
Right.
Um, another historical day that just happened last Monday, April eighth, which, it, it again shows the, the discrimination that was going on back in the forties, fifties, sixties, went all the way up through the seventies, was, uh, fifty years ago, Aaron broke Babe's, uh, record, uh, homerun record, and, uh, and Babe had, or, I'm sorry, Hank had tied it and he had to go through the whole winter before it was broken on April eighth, and the death threats that man received and, and, I mean, you have a, a, a black gentleman who's from the south, he's from, you know, playing Atlanta, and what he experienced, especially during that winter, the death threats he had, the FBI had to sign an, an agent to him to make sure he was protected, and he was so relieved when he broke that record, you know, it was, it was, he was just relieved that it was over with, and it's sad because he should have been able to, be able to celebrate it the way it should have been celebrated, and, and, uh, instead of having the feelings of being relieved that it was over with, uh, it was unfortunate, but we've come so far from then, we still have a long ways to go, but at the same time, it was, um, it was a special time in history, so.
When you said April, I thought you were tying this into the eclipse somehow, and I, I didn't know where you were going with that.
Fifty years ago on Monday. And they were actually playing the Dodgers, the Braves were playing the Dodgers that day.
Oh, was it, no, it was in Atlanta.
It was in Atlanta and they were playing the Dodgers. Okay, we have anything from, uh, the public in the audience, Mr. Stout?
Larry Stout here as, um, not just, uh, well, weekly, but, um, as the Montgomery Area Historical Society President, so I'm going to bring some light according to, what is it, the Chat G P T, okay, correct, that it was the name Sandy Creek, but it was in the, um, the Napi Indian, uh, language, it's Lakomic, hence, like coming, it's sort of, so that's why, and, uh, but now, as I began to think about that, it reminded me, and this, it's the seventeen ninety, was that?
Seventeen ninety five, yeah.
Seventeen ninety five. There was a, a Pulitzer Prize winning writer by the name of Conrad Richter, who wrote a book about those Indians in the Pennsylvania area, and the story was a, it was set in nineteen, or seventeen sixty, of a, uh, boy that was captured as a young child, and then there was, now the Indians and the settlers were just saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna live nicely, so we're gonna trade back, and so the story is how this, this boy is in his teenage years and he, and he doesn't know what he is, he's back with the family, but he doesn't fit there, he, but the Indians don't want him either, you know, that, so he, he's struggling with this. It became a, uh, it was called Light in the Dark, or Light in the Forest, and it was a Disney movie, they, uh, nineteen fifty two, I think they made it fifty three, uh, it was a Nobel Prize, I mean, he didn't win a Nobel, he won a Pulitzer Prize, but, uh, this was, it was in Reader's Digest, you know, it was in, it was quite popular, in the sixties, we all had to read it. The author, Conrad Richter, was, lived in this area, he actually had brothers that graduated from Montgomery High School, uh, he, um, uh, actually became a writer because he came to this area as a teenager, he had been living out in Pittsburgh, he graduated from school in Groves, uh, city somewhere, somewhere, but anyway, his father became the pastor of Christ Lutheran Church, which was, we know now as the Stone Church, um, he was pastor there, this guy just was, was literally having a, a meltdown, came back and he walked around, he just spent, you know, days and days just walking in the forest and met some, you know, Native Americans and, uh, met the settlers and just found this, and he started to write, he wrote more for his own mental case, but anyway, so, um, we have a connection, in a sense, with, uh, with, um, our, our anniversary of, what, seventeen ninety, but it also has, I think, in the name, thank you for mentioning that and, and bringing it in, and it, it's, the, the book itself, Light in the Darkness, it's, it's really a good read, um, it's in Spark Notes, it's in, you know, all those if you want to cheat.
When did he write this?
Click it. He wrote it in nineteen.
No, 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 fifty three.
He wrote it, the Disney movie is in nineteen fifty eight, um, and by the way, um, Jackie Robinson made a movie, it was in nineteen fifty, it was called The Jackie Robinson.
Yeah.
Story. Story, and he played himself, yeah, it wasn't very good, I admit, it was, but, uh, but he, he himself, yeah, if you wanna see the real Jackie Robinson, he was there, so, anyway, thank you.
So, the name of the book is Light in the Darkness?
Light in the Darkness, yeah.
Thank you.
And we are, I mean, this, this, we give a, uh, we give a, um, every year we give a, a scholarship there in our, uh, Historical Society, and we're kicking around, uh, making that requirement, like, read it and relate it to, because personally, I think it, I've even, uh, tried to get, talked to some publishers, that I think it ought to be reprinted, because I think the, the identity problems of that, uh, young man actually relate very much to today, uh, he didn't know what he was and he was struggling to try and figure out, where do I fit, and, uh, I, I think, uh, Richter had really had some insights through all that, so.
Do you know how old Montgomery High School is, do you know?
Nineteen oh five.
It's been a while.
That's when it started, yeah, yeah, we go way back, so.
My dad graduated from there.
I tried to graduate, it was more like they kicked me out.
You guys are hilarious. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a Republican public this time.
While he's coming up, I also want to say, Hank Aaron, you come up, I was talking while you were coming up, uh, Hank Aaron was a way better hitter than he ever gets credit for.
Best player there ever was was Roberto Clemente.
Well, he was good, but when they talk about.
He was the best.
When you look at Hank Aaron's hitting stats, he did a lot more than hit in the rest, he was a way better player than he's ever given credit for.
Good morning, I'd like to thank John Shire in Jersey Shore, I'd like to thank the Commissioners two weeks ago for the, um, citation or paper, in recognition of Vietnam Veterans.
Frost Station, yes. Uh, and thank you for your service, John.
Well, that's new here and there, uh, I've been, watched ceremonies for the last two years, and my comments are not, I aimed at the county commissioners, but, uh, the local VA representative that runs the VA office here in Lake County County, both times has been here for the Vietnam Veterans Day recognition, but has ignored the big elephant in the room, which I did with a present, I did with a presentation on Agent Orange last year, and that is the biggest problem that is, um, like veterans coming back from Vietnam over the years, who many come back to this, although the sixty thousand died, they come back, uh, in coffins, and I knew two of them, Joe and Zaco, and Danny Eager, who come from the South Williamsport, the Boys Town area that I grew up with, uh, but a lot more veterans come back suffering from Agent Orange effects, and, and with the effects of that have killed a lot more veterans, Vietnam veterans, and there are over, they use twenty thousand or twenty million gallons in Vietnam, anything could cause it from a diabetist to, um, most everything, and I'm just talking about Vietnam veterans today, but the burn pits and the things like that, but he should know that, um, people coming back have various, varying degrees of success and failures and minimalism, not everyone was, uh, quote, business people, teachers and professionals, whether, and, um, what I find most disappointing is, is some people, um, when you, when you present information like I did, and you approach local people to publish this, as I wanted to last year, um, they wouldn't do it, but typical example is a reporter sitting back here, that's for a local, a local weekly, I gave him the information last year from the VA, everything else, and I went to the owner of that publication also, oh, we'll do something about, not a word, but yet the gentleman back here can write columns and everything else, own personal praise and everything else, patent stuff on the back, but when it comes to VA with the Agent Orange, a lot of it gets a lot under the carpet, I had a conversation with a girl when I was buying shoes last week, and she asked me if I wanted to round the price up for, um, for cancer funds, I said, yeah, I said, you know, we got to talking, and I said, my white diet is only cancer, but I went through, I'm the lucky one, I can figure things out, and she started wilding up and crying a little bit, coming through, tears coming through her eyes, and she said, yeah, my mother's stepson, or stepfather, he, he died of leukemia because he was a Vietnam veteran and got exposed Agent Orange, you know, so it is time that VA locally here, when that man is up here, and he should know, seventy two years old, what the big problem is, I'm not interested in, a lot of people aren't about vacation to Vietnam with things, we know that, we know the problems of UPS, post traumatic syndrome and all that, but the big elephant in the room has been the black, by the VA here to rep, to bring out what, the ravages of what Vietnam veterans have had to go through, dying in early death and, and everything like that, I'm one of the lucky ones, I only, I can't, could never produce any children, but, but I served in Vietnam, I handled, everybody handled it in Vietnam, I were exposed to, twenty million gallons was used, over a million and a quarter Vietnamese people died because of VA being exposed to these defolias, as they call them, our own government parties poisoned our own service people with their, but for that VA representative to not bring up two years in a row in a meeting like this that's devoted to Vietnam Veterans Day and ignore the big elephant in the room, shame on him, he owes an apology to every three thousand veterans like myself, ignoring it, I'd go up to Clinton County because I like it much better up there, thank you.
Thank you, John, thank you. Any other public comment at this time? Are they in line?
Yeah.
Um, okay, these are all from Thomas Adams. Good morning Commissioners, I hate to miss your meeting in person, but I sure do appreciate the live feed and the opportunity to comment, I would like to thank Commissioner Messina for his involvement with the crisis training program for public services, especially first responders, especially law enforcement, I understand people who don't understand mental health issues can be dismissing of such a program, as I shared in the past meetings, I know of a young man who suffers with inability to discern imagined dangers from reality, fortunately, where he lives, law enforcement is trained in very caring along with other first responders and public servants, I thank all of you for your dedication to our county and communities, also, the dedication of our local public servants is fantastic, the character of our service. The character of our service, services workers starts from the top. Appreciate the arts of love and care displayed throughout the county is a model for our state and nation. Excuse me. And then from Harper Will Try, thank you, Commissioner Musina, for advocating for marginalized groups. Here's to more Americans realizing woke is not a just, is not just a pejorative term and social justice is a lot of a goal for a society.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Eddie, I wanted to just piggyback on what Tom just said about, they just had a week long class for first responders and it was, it was, it was, there were police there, there were paramedics there, there were probation people there. And what they were training them for was to recognize mental health crises in the field. And when we, when we watch on TV, we see when the ambulance shows up, it was because of a car accident or something like that. And when the police show up, it's because they're apprehending criminals, because that's how it works in, on the movies and, you know. But there's lots of times that these people arrive and someone is having a, a mental health crisis that's of no fault of their own. And where they, they don't need incarcerated, they don't need handcuffed and thrown in and charged, that they just need help. And it's by no fault of their own, it is, you know, whether they're schizophrenic or whether they're, you know, whether it's paranoia or whatever the case may be. So this, this training was offered and there were a bunch of people and it wasn't just Lakemane County people, it was in Clinton County as well. And just the, the ability for these people to recognize in the field where, when these people are, just need help as opposed to need, you know, criminally detained. And because their first job is obviously to, for the safety of, of our society, but then they're, they're trying to protect these people as well who sometimes just need help. And it would, it's a, it was a wonderful program that these, that was put on, the training, it was, it was just like a class schedule. They went through multiple different variations. And it's just good that we're, we're recognizing that more and helping these people who need help.
It's a continuation of the mental health first day training that was provided for years to law enforcement, probation staff over the years. It kind of subsided when COVID was here, obviously, and now it's picked back up and West Branch has taken a lead on it and has, has grown with it, bringing more, more into it. So it's a week long training, I believe it's a week long.
Yeah, it was a week long.
Yeah, before it was two days. And so it's, it's a fantastic training. It helps those professionals to recognize the signs in the field so that things don't escalate and you can get the individual to help that they need.
Yes. And I just got an alert on my phone that OJ Simpson just passed away. Your next twenty four.
Yes, you will. Okay, we have completed our agenda, so our next meeting will be Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty four. Thank you.
I feel a little bit like Howard Cosell announcing the world of John. You know, OJ Simpson, the star of the naked gun.
Yep.